I worked this a bit.
I have until Monday to get you the breakdown, right?
I finished it. It looks nice. Now I'm doing a who does what. So. Okay, I can't remember. I wrote it down.
But I think even if we need to share some materials, we could print it.
Well, I haven't asked them. I just, I was just, I couldn't remember.
You know that age, you're like, no, no, get on the floor and not to get.
Yeah, and we can fit it in there.
Okay.
Yes.
You want to fit it in or you just want to extend this? We could extend the goal.
No.
But last time I said that.
Yeah, you gonna be on.
Well, that's something that you can. Where you said that last time you see.
This has to do with.
And all you saw was. Because it's not like, oh, I gotta stop doing that.
No, no. I got my color pencil. It'll go.
No, I don't have it in here. It's in the car.
I can get a couple minutes.
No, 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 no.
I'm like, I'm like. You have to bring your T-shirt with an A-style, huh? Oh, she's not, I'm like, closer to her. Yeah. No, I think you're free. And I asked if something comes up, I asked Dr. Jackson what he do. I know, right? I think another thing. My calendar is scattered. My calendar out together. Okay. What's on your calendar? Because I said it's on my calendar. Dr. Jackson.
Okay, thank you for bearing with us. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors for October 27th, 2021 is called to order. So loud, sorry. Tonight Nate Hogan is unable to attend because of some travel challenges. So I'm looking to see if there is an objection to excusing his absence tonight. Okay, seeing none. I will ask June to please call the rule.
Mr. Barca.
President.
Ms. Buckner. Ms. Cortez? Here. Ms. Ford?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolfstein?
Here.
Okay, and just for those in the back, we are getting a little bit of feedback. I see it. Great, thank you. Okay, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Some of them.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda. Do I have to actually have a vote on this one? So by acclamation? How do you say that, June? Okay, so do you approve? And if so, I see no objections, we'll assume it is approved by acclamation then. Can you tell I'm new at this? Okay. Next, we have review of old task and action items. June, and just as a reminder for those listening or in the audience and watching, what this is, is a new practice that we're doing at the end of every board meeting. June Kokmire, our secretary, captures what we have asked as board members for the administration to follow up on. And then at the following meeting, we just ensure that those are all taken care of and those that aren't, we make sure that there's continued work on them. On the web, on the board meeting itself, under this agenda item, you will find all of those answers so that the public itself can see the answers to the questions. So, June, what are the outstanding action items to date?
The only outstanding action item that we have is the school parent information that we need for DAC. And that was requested in September 22nd, board meeting.
And I think Ms. Waichel and I have talked about that one. So I know that your team is working on trying to get that information. Great, thank you. Which means that you'll be able to see it in the next board meeting agenda item. The public will. Okay, great. It looks like tonight, we, next is public comment. And we have two individuals who have indicated that they would wish to address the board this evening. As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes apiece per speaker. And the first speaker we have is Ms. Nicole Hale. Is Ms. Nicole Hale here? Great. Come right up to the mic. And if you're comfortable, you can drop your mask if that's. And we'll start when you start. Thank you.
Good evening. I am a former employee of the KCPS. My last day was on October 15th. And in no way am I a disgruntled employee. I just wanted to kind of share that I was hired as a restorative justice coordinator and I was placed at Success Academy at NOTS. And although I was there for a short while, there were some things, like some systems and practices that were in place that were not effective that I had brought to the attention of the administration and the Director of Support of Student Services. And I should kind of share that the things that were in place are not designed to change their student behavior or transition them back into the community. And by that, I mean that NOTS is an alternative program. So I come, my background is working with alternative children in alternative settings. And there were a lot of things that were in place that these kids did not have, such as anger management, ongoing counseling services that they do need, especially since they're constantly exposed or experiencing trauma. There was no behavior plans in place. They, and the principal at NOTS Academy had full staff. So he had a full-time clinician, a full-time RJ coordinator, a full-time counselor, a full-spread teacher, a full-time instructional support coach. And even though he had all these full-time support staff in place, the children continued to struggle and that was, and the classroom settings are small. So they're like three to four students in a classroom. And so the support staff that he had, he was not utilizing them in the appropriate way, I feel like. And when I kind of tried to suggest by email, different suggestions, different things like that, it was not received. I was just trying to figure out, how can we kind of fix this? How can we improve and make sure that these students are getting the proper services that they need in place? And it just didn't happen. The principal was made my supervisor, which kind of put me in a very uncomfortable and awkward position because the principal really does not understand my role as a restorative justice coordinator. And so because I did not have a, well, because the principal was my supervisor, I had no one that would, that I could share my concerns with and that I could advocate, that would advocate for me. I was just kind of there. And because I was kind of there, because I did not have anybody that could advocate for me, it just kind of put me in a very awkward position. It kind of created an environment that was kind of disengaged. It was very non-transparent. And so what I'm hoping that will come from this, because I'm not there anymore, is that the RJ coordinators that are still in place get a supervisor. I think it's important. I think it's crucial to kind of avoid some of the things that I went through. And that's my time.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hale, for coming and taking the time to speak. We appreciate it. Next, I believe is Mr. Tom Love, but, oh, there you are. Hiding. Welcome, Mr. Love. You know the drill.
Well, I want to start off by thanking Dr. Bedell for not allowing four-year-olds to enter kindergarten anymore in the future. This, this particular bill that I want you guys to take a look at will, will provide the funding for those children. This, this bill allows three- to five-year-olds who are low-income students, and 90% of the students are low-income, to get funding from the state for, based on the average daily attendance. So these September, I'm sorry, August and September birthday children that, that we were putting into kindergarten who were four years old, and it was allowed only in Kansas City and St. Louis, we've got the funding for it right here. So we can put them in pre-K and they can still get a year of, of education to get ready to be successful. The key thing about that is not just that they're in school, but they have an additional year to mature. That's really huge for boys. Boys are six months developmentally younger than girls. And you, you put that in there with being disadvantaged and then you put them in at such a young age, it's devastating for their first year. I mean, our students, one-sixth of our students were actually going into second grade when they should be starting first. Everyone was promoted, which was against the law. 100% of the students this last year, 98 out of 98, were all promoted. In a year when we had COVID, where the average student lost four to five months across the country. They didn't all pass. They didn't all complete kindergarten standards, which was required by state law. So I'd like for the, for the school board to look at those children that now have gotten their grades for the first quarter. They're not legally supposed to be there. We need to identify them, that if they're, they didn't do well this first quarter, they need to be placed in kindergarten. That's where they're supposed to be anyway. If it was any other place besides Kansas City or St. Louis, that's where they'd be in Missouri. That's the law. And, but we've got this. This will help 500 to 600 children that we can allow the kindergarten teachers to screen them and identify who's ready to go into kindergarten and who could be placed into pre-K. And they, they can be really successful. They'll be, they'll be put up at the top of the class. They'll be, instead of striking out, they'll be hitting home runs. That's what we want for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. All right, the next portion of our meeting is the student report from Camila Alvarez about the Student District Advisory Council.
Good evening. Typically, you would have a student in front of you reporting out on our Student District Advisory Council, but we had our first meeting last week and I didn't want to throw them off the deep end just yet. But this year is our third year going in and we had 30 applicants across our six schools. For our first meeting, we had 12 students show. And so we spent the beginning part of our meeting talking about barriers to participation. And so moving forward, we'll try, change some of those dates and times to best fit their schedule. But we also discussed the focus for our year, which includes a lot of Blueprint 2030 engagement to make sure that our students are a focal part in the engagement phase and that they own this work. And then we'll be preparing, preparing them for Child Advocacy Day in 2022 because we'd like them to join DAC. And also preparing them to lead student summits with Ms. Thomas. So we'll be working on that to make sure that we create student advocates starting, you know, while they're in our district. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Wonderful. Oh, it makes my heart pitter-pat about Student Advocacy Day. All right, the next up is Mr., or it's Dr. Bedell's superintendent's report.
All right, we're moving along pretty well and we have a video highlight before we get into our recognition for Cese Puere, our competition winners. I hope you can hear me. We will then go to a marketing Blueprint 2030 update. We will have an enrollment update for the board and the community. And then we will go into our strategic plan goals, scorecard update. And so we'll roll with the video highlight and then get into the celebration of our, our competition winners for Cese Puere.
In Phase Two of the Blueprint 2030 planning process, we answer the question, where do we want to be? But first, let's take a look at how we got to where we are now. The school system has made great strides the last 15 years thanks to families fighting for the best education possible for their students. In 2010, Kansas City families helped make tough decisions that led to the system balancing a $50 million budget deficit. In 2014, Kansas City public school students earned professional accreditation on state tests and Kansas City parents fought off a state takeover of their school system. In 2016, Kansas City families helped make tough decisions that reduced costs of the system, created a school feeder pattern system, expanded bus transportation, and generally laid the groundwork for our strategic improvement. In 2017, the entire community came together and developed a strategic plan which has guided the district's decision-making over the past several years. In recent years, Kansas City students showed great improvement on their AP and IB scores and students graduated at higher rates. To round out the decade, students and families crowned their accomplishments by earning the highest APR in KCPS history. Families and students have also fought for improved experiences through extracurricular activities and new academic opportunities. Along with physical, social, and emotional support for students. But is this all enough? The students and families still deserve more. While the administration has continually engaged the community over the last several years. We've heard you loud and clear and this is what you've told the administration you want. A school system that is in the center of the Kansas City community. Schools with a stronger sense of community. Schools with enough enrollment that would lead to more students for more competitive athletic teams, increased extracurricular activities, and more robust course offerings. Reduced inefficiencies. Efficient, state-of-the-art, future-ready facilities. Quality educational experiences. And above all else, equity for all students across all schools. And above all else, equity for all students across all schools. Quite simply, the vision for Blueprint 2030 is to take Kansas City Public Schools to where our students and families want it to be.
And look, I know we have a good number of folks here today, and I'm thankful that many of you are here to participate with us tonight. But this video that you just had an opportunity to look at is really about the future. I see a lot of young children in here, and how do we shape this school district in a way unlike we've ever done before? How do we begin to look at a traditional model, truthfully, that may not be relevant by the time these elementary kids who are in here get to high school? So when we have these community meetings, we really want you all to come out. It doesn't, it just, it takes thirty or forty minutes to come in and just give us some input. This is about your community, your school district, the future of this city as a whole through how we educate kids. And it can't be about what a superintendent wants or his or her administration. It has to be around people who are grounded, living here, helping us figure this out. This isn't about school closures, even though that's what media always makes it out about. This is about us having an opportunity to dismantle a system, redesign it, and make it work for us. If one thing we learned is that COVID exposed us for who we are. And so if we don't catch up with the times, if we don't remove the rigidity that exists within this system, we will continue to be more obsolete. We have an opportunity to be bold. So that's the reason why we wanted to share this video, because as we engage our Board of Directors, they're gonna be working with us side by side. We have to have input from this community. So when those building principals call and they reach out to you all, tell everybody, come out. This is about a brilliant future that we can all build together. So I just want to thank you all for being here. And hopefully, as this board meeting is archived, people will get to this part and be able to hear our call for action. Come and help us design it. We can do this together, just like we did that strategic plan back in 2017. So thank you, and I'm ready to move forward with our Cise Puente Art Competition winners. So we will bring up, is Marquis, am I bringing up Darryl or Marquis? All right, Marquis. Good when we're bringing Marquis up. Marquis Hall. Goodwin is a football player.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Dr. Bedell, and esteemed members of the board. I'm here today because we have the privilege of announcing our winners for the Cise Puente Art Competition. All right. So this was a district-wide competition. And what we did was we did a lot of communication with our schools, our building leaders, and even our students. I can say firsthand that I went out and I talked to students firsthand. I talked to teachers just to get everybody to participate in this competition. There were various members on our scoring committee. You can see their names listed over to the right. And they represent a diverse group of people that were looking at the artwork. And all entries were submitted by 5:00 PM on October 20th of 2021. Okay, yeah, the mouse is kinda... All right, so for our rubric, we had a three-category rubric for our scoring. We evaluated the art pieces based on creativity and originality, effort and perseverance, and craftsmanship and skill. Tonight, we're going to award four prizes in the different divisions. We had a primary division of K through three, intermediate of four through six, middle for seventh and eighth grades, and high school for ninth through twelfth grades. Our first-place winner in our first-place winner in the K through three division was Adam Hergens. Adam Hergens is a third grader at Carver Elementary School. And now I'm going to invite Adam to come up and share a little bit about his work. Adam.
We'd love to hear about your picture.
So Adam's inspiration was his school. And when I went over and talked to Adam, he made it very clear that he loves his school a whole lot, because it's a dual-language school. And that was the inspiration behind his piece. Additionally, he also mentioned that he loves hot weather and he loves the desert. That's the reason that he created that piece. Adam Hergens and your family, please report back up. And anyone from Adam's school. All right. For our next winner, we had another first-place winner in the fourth through sixth-grade division. His name is Vance Minor. Vance is a fifth grader at Gladstone Elementary School. And he enjoys playing outside. He loves to trampoline, his friends, and television. And now I'm going to invite Vance to come on up and share a little bit about what inspired him to create his piece. Vance?
The meaning behind my Cise Puente project is that I believe there is no person that has more value than another. I do not support others who think black, white, or Hispanic people should have less than someone else. I've grown up in a diverse community my whole life. My very best friends are from other parts of the world. I think the Pledge of Allegiance should live up to what it says. Everyone is welcome, all lives matter, justice for all. Thank you for awarding my art project first place. I put a lot of time and effort into it to show what Hispanic heritage and other cultures mean to me. And thank you for this opportunity.
All right. Vance and anyone from Gladstone Elementary that would like to come up and take a picture, please come on up. All right. In our seventh through eighth-grade division, our first-place winner was Valencia Aranda. The interesting thing about Valencia is that Valencia comes from a family full of artists. Her grandfather is an artist. They have musicians. Everybody is doing something, dealing with art. So this was right up her alley. I would like to call Valencia Aranda to come up and share a little bit about her piece.
It's a little intimidating sometimes.
So I'll read it for her. My name is Valencia Aranda. I attend Foreign Language Academy. I am a seventh grader. My inspiration for creating my painting was the word "strength" and being a Latina woman in this society. I use symbols that meant strength from different cultures, but I also used symbols that meant women. Hispanic Heritage Month means to me to be recognized as a woman and to be proud of our contributions to history. Viva Latina Woman.
Anyone from Valencia's family or Valencia's school that would like to come up, please do. All right. And for our high school division, nine through twelve, we have our first-place winner. Her name is Guadalupe Pacheco Ornelas. And Guadalupe is an eleventh grader. And I'll let Guadalupe share a little bit about her story and what inspired her to create her piece. Come on up, Guadalupe.
What inspired me to do my artwork was I drew people from different backgrounds, because despite my background of my parents and what they did for me to grow up and to be able to graduate. What I'm trying to say is that my parents, they didn't get as many opportunities as I did growing up, and they worked hard for me. And I'm gonna be the first to graduate in my family because of what they did for me, and I'm really grateful for that. So I decided to draw people of different backgrounds, because despite what their parents and everything did, they can still graduate and do many good things.
Would Guadalupe's family and anyone from Northeast High School come on up? I also wanted to let you all know that Guadalupe will be graduating early. And she plans to go to UMKC and study forensic psychology. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the winners. I think we should give them one more round of applause. This is always one of the more, like, exciting events that we get to do throughout the year.
Outstanding, and congratulations. And I'm just trying to figure out what you all are gonna do with that one-hundred-dollar gift card, because I know y'all got some plans for that this weekend. Hey, did they receive them already? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, okay. They may be spent already. Okay, so hey, congratulations, everybody. Proud of you all. See you later. I got to hang out a little bit with our Northeast High School student yesterday when I went over there and visited. So proud to see her here tonight, being recognized. The next thing we have is our marketing Blueprint 2030 update, and we'll pass that over to Kelly Waite.
That is much nicer to have them in person versus trying to toggle online, like we did last year, honoring our students. So good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bedell. Thank you for the chance to present our monthly marketing update to you and to the public. As you can see here, this is a consistent reminder of our 12.5 Marketing Communications Indicator, as we have here on the title slide. We're going to go through about ten slides tonight. Okay, so history and previous context. You see this most of the months that I present to you. Again, this is our school marketing overview as far as our messaging, timeline, and vehicles from fall of 2021 all the way to summer '22. This is also our student recruitment overview that you see from points of connection, information, or informing, applying, and accepting positions in our schools. And again, you have these documents that you've been given as we started this school year. We also have been working on securing Holdsworth Communications. You guys approved them earlier this year. We're working through messaging timelines and vehicles for delivery, as well as our recruiting pipeline with our recruiter and marketing team. I think this is gonna be a little slow. Okay, current status. So you got to possibly meet Ms. Dr. Holdsworth last week. Dr. Holdsworth came in for three days last week as part of her research and planning phase of our marketing consulting contract. Dr. Holdsworth met with twenty-some folks and did interviews, did secret shopping, gathered information, joined some of our community engagement events that we had for our Blueprint 2030 process. And she's still in that process of research, planning, and gathering phase. She'll be in that phase till about November 1st next week, when we'll also start working on some implementation, some planning, as we go through the marketing contract timeline. We're also currently working on the preparation for advocacy efforts through our DAC, SAC, and Legislative Connections. We've been meeting with Government Relations Committee with Ms. Wolfsey to talk about our legislative breakfast items that we're working through, our schedule of events, and also work on that Legislative Advocacy Day, looking at that January timeframe to help train, build a parent network and pipeline for advocating on behalf of our kids and our staff and our community. Also working on our enrollment trends by monthly meetings. You've heard me talk about these before, where Dr. Bedell and key staff meet to go over enrollment trends in our key focus schools as we go through the marketing and recruiting pipeline. Also, we're currently in the status of execution of media buys in preparation for our December enrollment opening. You have approved some media buys up through this month, and you will again this month, this evening. And then next month, we'll bring to you a large bucket of billboard approvals as we sprinkle those throughout the city in strategic places with geofencing near our focus and target schools. Current status as well. We are currently, as you all know, in our Blueprint 2030 Engagement Plan and Communication Plan. These sample snips on your screen show our communication vehicles through which we've been talking about Blueprint 2030 engagement opportunities for our public. The What's the Priority is the current stakeholder survey that we have out there in the community and ones we've been gathering information from with our students and with our staff. Right now, we are in our second week of staff engagement. We are almost through every single school in the district over the lunch period or the afternoon period for Dr. Bedell today, of visiting with our staff via open-house lunches. We take lunch to them, and we ask them to come in and do a quick survey of prioritization of project enhancements. And then we talk to them for about thirty minutes to an hour about what they want to see as it relates to facilities, as well as our program, student outcome, experiences, and enhancements. These have been fabulous. These have been real learning opportunities for us. One of the things that we'll talk about in our workshop next week for Blueprint 2030 is low-hanging fruit. We're hearing lots of our staff members tell us there's some... there's some simple things you could do right away to really increase that experience and student outcomes for our kids and for our families. Also, current status on this. Wanted to make you aware, we're also working through our key influencers list right now. So today and tomorrow, we have grouped about five community groups from education to advocacy to government to economic development. And we're working on groups of 5 to 10 to 15 key influencer-focused groups that are done by Travis, our outside planning consultant with ACI Boland. So we'll finish those tomorrow in those groups of about 50 to 60 people that we're in contact with in those focus groups. You'll also see in your Friday update that full list of who we met with in these focus groups so you get a better idea of who those contacts, organizations, and people are. Future planning around community engagement for Blueprint 2030. We know that we're in this phase of information gathering, goal setting, mission commitments, and prioritization. So we are going to, as we talk about the timeline, still work through this goal setting and prioritization phase before we get to scenarios. The scenarios part, as it comes this winter, early spring, this is again when we continue engagement from our stakeholders to really help us form scenarios and tell us what they want to see out of those scenarios. We have no preconceived notions of what those scenarios might be. This is why we're trying to gather and funnel down those priorities so that we can now get to this scenario phase that's helped being built by the community. We also are working to secure that subcontractor with Holdsworth Communications. Last week, when Dr. Holdsworth was here, we met with two potential subcontractors. We're looking at the subcontractor engaging in the design phase, graphic design, the phase of looking at that key messaging, positioning of images and brands in the community, and how that targets our demographics and our subgroups. Also, we're currently evaluating KCPS Home Room. This is a new format in viewership. You know, we've pivoted to the pre-K demographic and audience versus that K-12 audience since our kids are in school this year. Also, future planning consists of storytelling of the district, making sure that we're getting our stories of our students, staff, and families into the homes of our families. We're looking at our analysis, our analytics of our media reports that you guys get on a monthly basis. We are really good on the newsy items, but we got to get better at the storytelling aspect. And as we're back in person, have access to kids, have access to classrooms, we're going to start picking up that storytelling piece of what our kids are doing and feeling the kids tonight who came and talked about why they contributed to Cese Puay. Those are beautiful stories, and I just saw Ellie videotaping those, I hope, so that we are able to share those on a wider scale and use those for our marketing efforts. And then the look and feel of KCPS as a whole, that contributes to the brand, the positioning, our marketing consultant. How do we convey the whole brand look and feel of KCPS through our marketing consultant and her recommendations? And then lastly, we have our Cese Puay Student Artists, but we're also looking for artists in our Charlie Hustle competition. We do have that closing here in the next week or two, and would love for you to advocate for your student artists to join us in that effort. All right, successes. We talked a little bit about this earlier this evening, but these are six of our schools that we've been tracking as focus schools for our marketing and recruitment planning. As you can see here, you're seeing total number of enrolled students this year versus our projected. And these schools hit their projections or went over their projections in our enrollment. And five of these six schools were our focus schools in our marketing and recruiting efforts for the last year. Specifically, I'll put an example of Gladstone Elementary. Ms. Carter was here, Vance was here. We're looking at Gladstone. They have a very engaged administration and a very engaged student lead team that do knock and talks, where they're going in the community, they're knocking on students' doors, potential students' doors, and give information about Gladstone and welcome them to their community. They also have very big participation in their cultural nights and school events to make sure that the community feels welcome in their school. And each of these schools has tactics we can talk about, tactics, strategies we can talk about that relates to why we think a lot of their enrollment increased at these individual schools. Successes. We also want to talk about Blueprint 2030 engagement numbers. While we're never going to be probably where we want to be with 100% engagement, 100% points of contact with our families, community, and staff, we do feel good about our staff engagement and going to them to talk with them on our lunchtime conversations and making sure that they feel heard, that their voice is acknowledged, and that it's actually used as we funnel priorities and funnel recommendations. We do need to continue to recruit stakeholders to join us for our community conversations, for our in-person gallery walks, and for our scenario work coming up this winter and this spring. We also are looking at a thorough review of our marketing processes with Dr. Holdsworth through this process. It's been a very good exercise for myself and for our team to go through and start analyzing all the data she's collecting and she's requesting as we go through this process with her as a consultant. And then I'd like to show you our social media analytics because they continue to be in the green, meaning we continue to gather followers and subscribers on all of our social media platforms, from Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube. And I'd like you guys to see that snippet in the news that you see in your monthly reports. Again, out of 120 stories that we had in the month of, we're in October, in the month of September, 42 of those are positive, 78 neutral, and zero negative stories. Opportunities for improvement. We continually want to stress that we need to find creative ways to engage our community and go to our community, making sure that we're not just offering opportunities for them to come to us, but that we're in our schools, we're in our neighborhoods, we're in places where people are already going, and make sure that we're talking to them, engaging them, and providing them opportunities to visit with us on their own turf. And then continuing to measure ROI on marketing communications and initiatives. These are always opportunities for improvement as we work with Dr. Holdsworth through her consulting contract. This is really focusing on those ROI opportunities where we can gain some traction and where we already have some good traction. All right, timelines and action plans. I just pulled these snips from Dr. Holdsworth's marketing consulting contract with us and our timeline approach to this project. You'll see the first bucket is research and analysis of our current market statistics. And so these are just a quick hit bullet points of what we'll be working on with her as we go through that research analysis phase. The next phase will be media strategy, audit, lead generation, and creative recommendations as we get through November and December. And those next two buckets entail, the slides are working, admissions and enrollment management, audit and recommendations. When she was here, she didn't have the chance to visit with David and his team, the Enrollment and Admissions Department, and several people in that department to get a really good grasp of how that department and how those functions are currently working. And then evaluation recommendations. This will be an ongoing function of her contract as we get through January, February, March, April, and May. How are recommendations landing? How are they being implemented? Are we getting that return on them? And that consistent evaluation of her efforts and partnership with us. Now, that one went really fast. Oh, okay. Barriers, policy, legislative, and financial. I continue to put number one as the bullet point here, enrollment trends nationally, regionally, and locally. You continue to see through research that we also visit with you about is enrollment trends in public education sectors continue to go down. Even though we really did flatten this year and increase this year versus last year, we do have concerns about those ongoing enrollment trends across the public education landscape. I continue to have upcoming legislative session on this as a bullet point, knowing that we have a battle and challenge ahead of us as we build our parent advocates, and we continue to advocate for public education in Kansas City. And then, again, communication fluctuation. We're still in the middle of a pandemic. We're still in the middle of quarantines. We're still in the middle of COVID adjustments, booster shots, students maybe being eligible or not being eligible yet for the vaccine, and still working through what's gotten better, transportation challenges, but still working through some one-offs when we look at communication around transportation and bus operations. And then just historical context. You know, as we look at continuing to bring KCPS into the light of positive perception and really great experiences for our families, we're always going to be kind of battling that historical context. And we're excited about that challenge because we're making really good progress. And action items. Again, continued Blueprint 2030 engagement. Looking forward to providing you some of those key influencers conversations and asking for your help as a board with some of our community partnerships, organizations, neighborhood associations, as we're going to ask you to kind of partner with us and tag-team those events as we go through November, December, and January months. And then also, we're looking at securing that subcontractor with Holdsworth Communications as we go through the process of our marketing consulting contract. And that is it for tonight's presentation. Questions?
Ms. Buckner?
Hi, thank you for this. The one question I had is can you kind of unpack what you said you were going to bring in the subcontractor during the design process? Like, what is the design phase exactly?
Yeah, great question. And we're looking at, we have several opportunities to bring in a subcontractor at different phases throughout the contract, whether it's research and planning, whether it's planning and execution, whether it's implementation, or whether it's evaluation. Because Dr. Holdsworth has a really good background and really good sense of the research and gathering what we've given her, we thought it was a little bit early to bring in that subcontractor right away. But we feel like having that Kansas City flair, that Kansas City tone in the design, the key messaging, and possibly the positioning piece of our overall brand message, and then also targeted school demographics and neighborhood demographics, we thought a local contractor would be helpful in that flavor of the design process for individual schools and for the larger district as a whole. So that was our thinking there. And that's where we're looking to secure in the next probably month in this process.
Okay, so by design process, do you mean like designing the key messaging or designing the flair? I guess those two things are different for me.
Yeah, as we go through a design process, particularly with designers who do this for a living, we start with a little bit of research, which is what we're gathering and that what they might gather on their own. But the research that we're gathering, they're going to use that to help think about key messages. They might be talking to some folks in our neighborhoods, talking to some of our focus groups, kind of joining those, and maybe even gleaning from the research that we already have. But as we look at key messages, and how do those translate to the visuals, images, messages that ultimately end up on all of our vehicles or platforms? Or, you know, billboards, let's put it that way, radio spots, TV spots, commercials? What is the ultimate message that lands with those design and those creative products?
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that like, the whole purpose of us naming that we wanted a subcontractor was so that is because the concern was that Holdsworth did not have the understanding of the cultural landscape and racially, like demographically, like just kind of disconnected from who we are as a district.
Okay.
And so when you said "design process", like my antennas went up a little bit. Like, are we talking about billboards here? Are we talking about actually like crafting the key messages that need to be put out?
It's both of those items, you bet. And we think any good designer uses that research, key messages, tenor of the community to then build whatever design or creative goes into the final product.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Yeah, I'm just curious to know. I know it's very early in the process, and we've only been kind of engaging in this latest process for like a week now. But I'm curious to know if we're getting any feedback on how we're presenting the information or we're getting feedback? Is there any early themes that are starting to emerge? Are people preferring like the open house style versus the online? Is there anything that you can share relative to that stuff?
Yes, I love that question because it's fun for us to talk about how we've engaged and how many folks have engaged and how they've engaged. So last week, between Phillips and Central Middle, we had about 50 community members join us for both of those events. Friday morning at Hale Cook, we had about 60 to 70 folks in person. Thursday night's virtual event, we had over 90 attendees join us for that online experience, which was really, I thought, a great opportunity to hear some voices, Dr. Bedell to help facilitate, answer some questions, and really hear some voices that we hadn't heard in person. So our in-person events, comments really like the gallery walk. It's open house styles, very informal conversations with members of the executive team and communications and marketing team. So we're getting one-to-one conversations where we hear personal questions, and then we give personal responses based on the content that we have in those gallery walks. Thank you to those of you who joined to get a sense of how those were going. We did get good feedback around. They liked the content. It was laid out in a way that was understandable when they did the gallery walks. And I think we have an opportunity to leverage and use those a little bit more. Do we need to go to every school and do those at the end of the day? That's a big lift, but it is something that we're considering, given that we still want to have that gallery walk, open house conversational style for everyone who wants to participate. But we're again seeing those trends of those virtual meetings are really popular with our families. 90 people during on a Thursday night at 5:30. The ability to do it from home in your pajamas or on your phone. These are really popular for our families. And facilitation went great. We still have slideshows, opportunities for feedback. We currently have our Survey Monkey out about prioritization. Went to all families today. It was released on social today. I talked about our staff engagement, really productive, again, personal conversations among all of our staff members. So we still have some work to do. We still have, I call it kind of slow rolling in this phase of engagement before we get to scenarios. There's always opportunities, talking with principals about how we can leverage their relationships with their school community to tack on to events. We're doing our key influencer groups. We're doing our organization visits over the next couple of months. So always opportunities and looking forward to continuing that engagement process. Oh, students, I want to add students too. You heard Camila talk a little bit about the Student Summit and the SDAC. We have 60 students coming next Wednesday for a Student Summit around Blueprint 2030 solely. They will focus on the gallery walk with us, giving us feedback. They'll do some survey work, and they'll also look at those commitments and those draft mission, the draft mission, to give us feedback around how they feel about that, if it represents their sentiments as students. And we really hope to, with Ms. Thomas, hope to can keep them engaged throughout the year, maybe in the winter or the springtime, but have that cohort of kids be our student representatives to go back to their schools and visit with their administration, with their peers, and really help gather that sentiment around student voice for Blueprint 2030. And when we did the SDAC last year with one of our Thought Exchange surveys, those SDAC students went back to their home schools and shared on their social channels, which is where we got over 500 responses from students in the high school level alone from some of their peers just asking them to participate in a survey with us. That was a long answer, but...
I'm going to do Ms. Jones and then come down to that and then back to Mr. Barcas. So, Dr. Jones?
Oh, thank you. Just more of a comment. I think for, I'm glad to hear that it sounds like the web-based ones are also, you know, high engagement, and that's cool. I think that for maybe the in-person ones, maybe heavier meal provisions might be helpful because that is that dinnertime. And by the time you come to that and then go home, it's kind of late to be feeding little kids.
We would love to do that. We just did snacks. We're worried about COVID and trying to do like box lunches for everybody. We were trained, what's that fine line of a heavy meal versus just snacks? I appreciate that comment. We would love to do meals if that's an opportunity. We'll look at the budget for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Cortez?
Comments, well, one is a question, the second is a comment. So you talked about the community engagement at the school based in the virtual meetings. Share with us a little bit kind of the level of engagement that you're seeing as you do the faculty and staff engagements at the school level.
I'm going to, I think Dr. Bedell can pitch in. We've got a whole team of folks who can give their sentiments around what they've been seeing because it's been a team effort. We wanted all of the executive team to go out and experience and hear with these guided questions. I was at Northeast Middle today and had about 70 teachers join me in the library and just sit and visit on couches, had lunch together. We're seeing that at schools, they're of course focused on their own school, their own facility, their own programs. But they're also, as we get to the end, we say, okay, let's think big picture now. Let's look at the whole system in KCPS. What are your recommendations? What are your thoughts around how we're navigating this? The continued sentiment is thank you for coming to talk with us. They also recognize that we were there in the spring. We did this in the spring. And they're seeing that continuation, that closing the loop that we're hearing and we're using their thoughts to form priorities and recommendations moving forward. So I want to add that they're appreciative of the conversations, and this is the right thing to do. Dr. Bedell, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Well, I think you nailed it. I just was at Richardson, Early Childhood Center. This is before the board meeting the night, and we had the whole staff in there. And Jessie and I both worked together to engage them in this process. We give them a survey to try to help us narrow down. I think what you all have seen is we're like this right now. And now we're at that phase where we're starting to narrow down to the things that everybody's going to tell us. What are the things that are of great importance? What are the things that are of medium importance? What are the things that are of low importance? And then we'll take all of that data, once again, triangulate it. That same question came up today because they remember us coming during the spring. And one of the things they said was, well, what did you guys do with all of the information from the spring? And so we shared with them how this, what you have with that sheet, with all of those different... And so we shared with them how this, what you have with that sheet with all of those different priorities, that's what came from that engagement during the spring. And now we're at a point now where we have to start narrowing down. And we also, we gave it to them with budgetary implications. So now they're seeing that some of these things that everybody said we want to do, they're seeing what the cost is with that. So they have been very thankful. We asked them, what is it that we can do differently than what happened in the past? And one of the things they said is continue to do this, have us at the table at the forefront. I think it's the same thing that we've been hearing from this board, which is the reason why, you know, we're not going to rush this. I'm not, I'm not going to rush this board into a vote just because we need to get it, we need to do it right. We need to engage thoroughly. And that's the thing we learned from that article that came out last week, is that there needs to be more engagement. And I think we will do that and we will let this community help us shape what those scenarios, all of those things will look like. But they have been very appreciative. I can tell you Jesse was there and he probably can fill you in on what they said about what they feel is already different about this process than last time, even though both processes are a necessity.
I think all of these folks can raise their hand if they've been to one or more staff lunches in the past two weeks to visit with our folks.
The other is a request. I thought I had to Q off though because I pressed mine.
And that is really, to the extent that we can project out a little further for these engagements. And I know that that is challenging with our, you know, with the complexity of a school system and all the things that you're having to be responsive to. But speaking a little bit selfishly, with a week's notice, it's pretty tough for many of us to make ourselves available when we really want to be participating in these community meetings. So please, when you can, try to, try to plan out a little ahead of time so we can participate.
I agree, I'm with you, valid, fair, reinforcing that. I think that you're right on target. And one of the things as we maybe slow down this timeline is more time for preparation with the content that we're currently in to make sure we're telling that story during our engagement phase and just prepping all those materials in the right way to go talk to our community. So 100% hear you and agree.
And even if it looked like, you know, as we look forward two months, if you would block out the following times for potential community engagements, it's always easier to take it off the calendar than it is to put it on.
You are, I think, going to get some of that on November 3rd, isn't that correct, Ms. Waichu?
Yes, so we've been talking about the workshop format as we've been doing, I think we've done two, one at this point. I'm losing track of how many workshops we've had, but one about more discussion based with you as a board, input based. So we're not just presenting to you and giving you a bunch of slides, but we're doing more engagement of discussion and conversation about where we are and what's upcoming. So with that, we do intend to give you that more built-out timeline of holding some blocks of space for us versus doing it two weeks in advance for your schedules.
And I think most importantly, allowing for you all, you will see the number of different entities we have to go and engage. So being able to say to you all, which of these do you feel you could help us with? You know, be a part of this process, offer some remarks before we go into the engagement. So you all will be able to look on this list and kind of choose the ones where you think, hey, I can have significant impact in helping you all to get people to show out and be a part of this process.
And I just prepared that for your Friday update. I actually said it's going to be your homework assignment between Friday and Wednesday when we meet at the workshop. We do have a list and we want you to kind of sign up next to those organizations that you can go with us to, that you can recruit for us, or that you can get on their meetings with or for us. So be looking for that Friday in your update.
He's been waiting so patiently, go ahead, Mr. Barca.
Well, actually, I was going to agree with my colleague, Ms. Buckner, about the sub-process and just trying to understand how exactly that engagement and when along that timeline they're going to be brought in. As I think that is a significant component that we are very concerned about. And even with the data collection side, right? I mean, you can't understand truly the perspectives if there is no other perspective in her team. So I think if you can share a little bit about, you know, you're going to engage diverse chambers of commerce locally. Are you, do you have a list of diverse groups that have applied that you're going to then re-approach for a sub-opportunity? How, what, how does that look for the engagement of subs for the general contractor now?
Yep, so like I said, we went and met with two of our potential subcontractors last week. So we're right in the middle of trying to secure them so they can get in the process as early as possible. So we first started with our district list of women-owned or minority-owned businesses that are in the community engagement, the design, the research, or that marketing sphere. So from that list, I don't remember how many were on that list, I don't want to say anything because I don't know the number, but I'm going to say between 10 and 20 people who were on that list of subcontractors that fit the criteria. And so we worked from that list to then go and research all of the companies. And then that's how we selected who we wanted to go meet with last week.
Is that our sub-process to own or is that their sub-process to own in terms of who actually hires them?
Between Holdsworth and between Kansas City Public Schools, we're looking at as a collaborative effort that we share in that decision-making of who we bring in because we have the expertise of Kansas City and working in the district. But also looking at Dr. Holdsworth's expertise from the lens of this is what she does for a living. So we're approaching it collaboratively, not she's picking or we're picking, but we're trying to do that together.
The other reason why I challenged that a little bit is because I remember when Linda was here and that she's not here to defend herself, but there was an admission basically that we've not done a lot of work with our diverse chambers to engage them more. So I worry about that list being truly robust, so.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Not necessarily something you have to go correct because it sounds like you've already gone through a process, but as we kind of continue to expand that, I think there's more opportunity there.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yes.
So, yeah, so that's, that's it on that one. The other one was about Blueprint 2030. I was actually presenting to a group today, the Truce Alliance, I believe. And I looked at our website about Blueprint 2030's next steps after the engagement of this last week and realized it kind of was vague about the future. So I think I would encourage, as I think some others have said, just put more opportunities or maybe even if it's just an open chat box to let's talk so that we can divert people directly to a, and there's more opportunities and here's where it is beyond Call Kelly. So just a feedback point.
Yeah, thank you. Again, the challenge as we work on the process with the engagement is making sure that the process and the decisions are being formulated, the content's being created, you know, knowing that it's ready before we go out to start engaging our families. It's kind of that coexisting relationship between content, decisions, and the engagement piece, so very well understood.
Are you, is that it? Okay, Ms. Buckner?
Yes, so this is really just feedback around Blueprint 2030. I forgot who was just speaking, I'm really tired. But in connection to the priorities were mentioned and how those translate to the survey, we are going to sound like, and it's necessary, like broken records, right? But we have to. I, what's been swirling around in my head, and I'm sure that you've said it, I'm sure that we've talked about it, but where the heck did these priorities even come from, right? And so we have to like continue to hold hands and walk people through this. Like did these priorities just come from some, you know, things that the district came up with? And so hearing like there was work in the spring that that's how we got to this is like super important, right? Because then it looks like, oh, they already know the scenario, they already know what they want to do if we, if we're not taking folks through that in this way. So the feedback is the more that we can say, this is where we got this from, like the more we analyze and interpret this data and say that it's truly from the community, from our teachers, parents, and families, like, you know, I think the more comfortable folks will be with this. And we'll, we'll continue to, we'll stop hearing the district already knows what they're going to do.
You are right, and so just for some context around that to share with the larger public who might be listening in with you as a board, I want to say we started Blueprint 2030 before we even got here, less than two years ago. And so this has been started, delayed through COVID. We've had our advisory team consistently meeting. But yes, all of this data that we've gathered to even come up with those priorities and price tags have come from direct feedback from our students, from our parents, from our families, and from our staff members. So as we engage in the spring, kind of picked that back up in January last year, did some in-person, did some online, did some staff engagements. We had a thought exchange, we had several opportunities survey-wise and virtually. That's where we formed those priorities that you see on those sheets. So I appreciate you iterating that, as much as we can tell that story of closing the loop of feedback consistently, that's exactly correct.
Yeah, I think it's, it's simple. Context matters because even as we think about those scenarios, I'm not certain that, that we even shared that with the board, that, that, that those, those goals and all of that stuff came from us engaging the staff. So it sounds like this is the first time you're hearing it when I made that comment, that this was a collection of all of the engagement we did across the district prior to that hitting. So that gap that we had in there, you know, most people will think, hey, you guys, that, that's the thing we're trying to get away from. People thinking that we're just coming up with this stuff, we're not engaging people and there's no voice in it other than us. So that context matters and we 100% will be very intentional. Even as we have our small groups, we just have to think about that as we're war rooming these, the data that we get in as we're triangulating it, how do we make sure that there's context and people really understand that this is a collaborative process? That's very fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waichu, and we are ready to move on to our enrollment update. And I know Mr. Rand shared a little bit of this with the board in the back as we were going through some of the superintendent evaluation items. But it's also important that the community has an opportunity to have some idea of how we're tracking engagement and what systems are we putting in place, I mean enrollment, and what systems are we putting in place to ensure that, that this is a major focus in this district.
All right, thank you, Board Chair, Dr. Bedell. Board, community, thank you for your time this evening as we're sharing an update on enrollment as Dr. Bedell mentioned. And now I get to deal with the clicker? And so to start with, we have our key performance indicators, which are pretty straightforward. Student enrollment and family satisfaction. We want to go up by about 2,000 students over fall of 2020 and we want at least 80% of our families satisfied with their customer service, with the application process, as well as our communication. In terms of looking at history and previous context, these are two graphs you might have seen previously from previous work that's been done in the district. The graph on your left is showing you historical enrollment for KCPS. We are the blue line. That first dotted line that you see is the introduction of charter schools into the system, after which that orange line on the bottom represents charter school enrollment, the purple line on top, the system enrollment as a whole. And then that blue line again is our KCPS enrollment. I believe that graph speaks for itself, I don't think I need to expand on that. If you look at the chart on the right, what you're looking at are historical population numbers in terms of the number of residents in our boundaries of KCPS. As you can see, they have decreased over the years. And in terms of looking at 2030, Blueprint 2030, we're not seeing it projected to increase. So that leads to the very logical conclusion, if we don't have new families entering the area, we have to pull from our current families. A little more history and previous context, just want to remind the board, we did present a strategic enrollment management plan earlier this year. While we did do robust engagement with a variety of stakeholders to inform this plan, as you saw in the Blueprint 2030 video, there's been systems analysis engagement that the district has been doing over the last five, 10 years. And we had got a little, a lot of really good information from those reports and those engagements, which helped inform the plan. We made sure it was aligned to our current plans and policy and we identified action steps to really try to make improvements in the four areas that you see listed there. Moving on to some enrollment numbers, what you're looking at here is our enrollment from this fall compared to the two previous falls. So SY20, that's school year 2019, 2020, that was our last year before COVID. SY21 was last school year, obviously a COVID year. SY22 is this fall. And then the next column that you see there is what we were projected to have this fall. The good news is we increased by 118 over where we were last fall. Obviously, we would have liked that to be more and we also outpaced what we were projected to do. Some good news is if you look at high school where we've traditionally pulled kids back into the district, grades nine and 10 are very strong, especially grades nine, but we do still see challenges with those lower grade levels that we really know we need to be pulling new families into the system. All right, in terms of future planning, really looking at what our next enrollment cycle is going to look like, one really good thing is that we're transitioning to everything being an infinite campus. What this means is our current families will be able to apply for a signature school in less than 10 clicks and without having to enter any information. Our outside families will have to fill out a small interest form so we can collect basic contact and household information. But once they're in the infinite campus portal, again, less than 10 clicks to submit interest to be placed in a lottery for a signature school. Another thing that we want to do is provide a good experience for our families, similar to what we did leading up to the beginning of last school year. That is setting up an area in the Westport Room where our families have a good experience. There's not lines, they can get the answers to the questions that they want and to really improve their enrollment experience. The lottery window or the initial application window will be from December 6th through February 15th with us running the lottery closer to the end of February. Once we run and post the lottery, our families will have 10 calendar days to basically complete the registration and accept their seat. In terms of successes, our strategic enrollment management plan was one success. Out of that engagement, as well as the previous engagement work that had been doing, we had been doing, really pointed us to, first come, first served was not equitable and families wanted a much quicker way to indicate interest with the, for, for our schools. So we made those adjustments and feel that that contributed to families having a better customer service experience as well as the activity that we did at Manual, as well as in the Westport Room. Really providing families with a wide variety of information for both the district as well as community partners. And our families really responded by indicating they were much more satisfied with that experience. And so increased family satisfaction is another area in which we feel we made movement. Really customer service more so than the application, but we were above 80% in terms of satisfaction for families. And lastly, really making sure that we have our online registration available in the most prevalent languages spoken in our district. Opportunities for, whoa, for improvement, no secret here, communication, 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 and customer service. Not only communication with our families, but communication with our schools so that if a parent asks anybody at a school, that they're able to provide basic information about how the enrollment process works. And so that's work that we're going to be doing between now and Thanksgiving to try to really make sure that our schools have that information and supports for our families. Also want to make sure that we're communicating within the district as well with the other departments that really play a big key role in enrollment, as well as continuing to improve in our communication in families' native languages. In terms of barriers, staff turnover is one. We have a lot of new folks in our enrollment office over the past 16 months. Since I started July 1 of last year, we only have two members of our enrollment office that were there before I came. And so while that was a barrier in our previous cycle, we think that we've come up with some strategies to really turn that into an advantage to make sure that we're fully staffed and able to support our families. Also, the transition in student information systems, not being able to fully do everything in infinite campus, we had to do some workarounds, which created some issues. Obviously, COVID-19, a barrier for pretty much everything in the world. Also, we get a big rush of families at the last minute, which- Also, we get a big rush of families at the last minute, which can cause some issues with backlogs as we try to process registrations. And lastly, we don't have all of our support services centrally located. And so depending on what I may need, if I'm an ELL family that may qualify for students in transition, but I start here and I speak a language other than Spanish that we're able to support here, you might have to go to Woodland and Manual. And we really don't want our families to have to travel multiple places. And we're trying to work with all of our support departments to ensure that we at least have people temporarily all in the same place in our really busy times, and also try to figure out how we can leverage technology in the less busy times to make sure our families don't have to travel around. Lastly, action items, that is finalizing signature school admissions criteria, especially thinking about Lincoln. I am sure the board is well aware that folks were not happy with the engagement that we did last year before making the temporary change. And so we are in the middle of that 45-day engagement period to make sure we really do get that feedback from families, to figure out if we're going to go back to the previous admissions requirements that we had, extend this for another year under COVID, really try to figure out what we want to do, make sure we thoroughly engage that community so that they're aware before we bring any recommendation to the board. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Cortez.
I'm going to try to prioritize these. Some of them are not things I expect answers on tonight, so let's just be candid about that. Infinite campus, are we ready?
We are getting ready, and I feel much, much better. I was worried about a week ago, but now I'm feeling really good about it. I think it's going to be, we're going to get it set up the way it needs to be set up, and I think it's going to make it way easier for our families.
We're going to test the heck out of it before we go?
Yes. Yeah, the idea is to be ready hopefully two weeks in advance, so that we can do plenty of testing with the system.
Okay. Number two. And I'm not expecting the answer to this. What percentage of families that applied to signature schools, or what percentage of students that apply to signature schools do we not, are not able to get in? Meaning, how oversubscribed are we? And I'd be curious to know by school, because one of, one of the things that even in listening to your presentation just jumps right out is that if, we have to be thinking, and this is, this is in Ms. Waichu's ballpark as well, if our neighborhood schools aren't schools of choice as well, we're cheating ourselves of an opportunity to deepen that relationship early on. And so, you know, because there's such intensive focus on the signature school enrollment, I think we kind of write our own outcome on the process and the timeline that families today use for neighborhood school enrollment. And I think we need to spend some time rethinking our strategy about not only making neighborhood schools schools of choice and what that needs to look like from an academic and community standpoint, but also from an enrollment standpoint. How do we walk beside our families to help them make those decisions earlier so that we can plan better for the beginning of the academic year? I mean, I think those pieces kind of drive each other, and it's not, it's not just kind of sitting out here, something we can't have any influence over. So I would challenge us to really think about that in the context of, I'll send the rest of my questions later, because I could, I could do this for a while.
Well, you can pause now, I'll go down here and I might come back to you. You probably have some of the same ones I do. Okay, Dr. Jones.
I'm just thinking about the students and the families who have to go to different places, as you talked about how the services aren't necessarily centralized, especially for people who speak different languages. I didn't know if the district has had an opportunity to price out stuff like the language line or something like that. I know the Health Department uses that, so we don't have, we have like a couple of languages at the Health Department, but the language line, people pick it up and there's an interpreter for 240 different languages on there, so.
Yes, yes, we do utilize the language line.
Okay, okay. So, but they still have to go to another location?
Depending on exactly what they need, they might need information about services that we might necessarily have, or as detailed answers as they might need. But the language line does alleviate some of that.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Abarka, you may want to hit your mic there, Dr. Jones.
Good. One note, kind of on that same line of thought from Dr. Jones, in my experience, I had to fill out two applications for pre-K3, one for the institution and one for KCPS. So I don't know, and I have very good flexibility, I can get there, do all that stuff, but I can see how that is an extra burden for some folks, that we might consider how we can better data share, because I've also seen that overall, when there's a third party involved in some of those partner sites, it gets challenging on all different kinds of issues. So just encouraging, I know some of this is outside of your control, so I'll spread it out, but when it comes to the enrollment side, I was literally asked to fill out the same stuff at a different site, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair. And I mean, as well as really ensuring our families know the difference between district pre-K and Head Start, that in and of itself, I don't, I think is an area of opportunity, much less, yes, you make a very good point.
I'm going to take advantage, and I have a few questions, and then Ms. Cortez, we do have some time in the calendar, or the agenda, so. One thing I've noticed is on the chart that has the enrollment, not for now, but later, can we eventually update that with the 2020 numbers and then the 2021 numbers, just so we can see where those lines are starting to move? So that was one thing. I also wondered if we knew the chart that shows our 19, 20, and 21 enrollment. It would be interesting for, I think, us to know just regionally, maybe a comparative district where they ended up as far as, just to see, we're comparing ourselves to independents quite a bit these days, just because of the size. So that and maybe a St. Louis, just to kind of give us a context, so we can understand those numbers a little bit better. And then one of the other things, just a suggestion, was do we know in our enrollment numbers, some of our neighborhood schools that had big increases perhaps in their kindergarten and first grade? I'd be curious to know if we have any of those, and if we do, then what maybe are they doing that we could replicate in other parts of our district? And then my last thing was, I know more than anybody that we have always had historically late enrollment challenges. My question would be, would it be worth spending some research dollars to possibly do some focus group, focus groups with those parents to better understand what is going on that's driving that behavior? Because maybe there could be some low, low-hanging things that we could address, but if we don't ask, we may never know. And so that's just a question. I don't know that we've ever done that before, so. Those were my four, Ms. Cortez.
One that I would add in here, and again, this is, this is laying groundwork for future conversation, is as I look at the estimated September count page, I think it's page 34, when I draw this line, right, that follows the cohort through, you know, let's say from kindergarten to first grade to second grade, those are the trends that concern me the most. So I'd like to hear some, as, as we work forward, some analysis of, you know, kind of how that fits into the marketing thinking and how that fits into the demographics, right? You know, if we lay that, those trends against our charter competitors, what, are we seeing, are we seeing this trend? Are we seeing this trend? Are we seeing something that's not quite as explainable? But I think, I mean, that's really our story, is by looking across the cohort data and not just first grade, year to year to year.
Yep.
I knew you'd come back, Ms. Fort.
Two quick questions. I wanted to, did I hear clearly that for students who are currently outside of the district that want to apply to signature schools perhaps, their timeline is later or outside of the window of current students? Did I hear that or no?
No, it's the same.
Okay.
The, the difference is, everything's going to work within infinite campus.
Okay.
And so we have to get these families a portal account so that they can indicate their schools that they're interested in.
Okay.
And so we'll just have an additional step for them, where we collect some basic demographic and household information to get them into the system.
Okay.
So that they can, but we want that to be short and painless, so that it's no longer than 10 minutes to be able to really submit your interest in, in, in school choices.
Okay. So I was just trying to understand if there's any kind of priority, I guess, for students that are currently in our system versus those that are outside coming in.
So yes.
Okay.
So our current KCPS students do get priority for signature seats over students from outside of the district.
Perfect, that's helpful. And then in the, you talked about considerations for changing the signature school admissions requirements, what is that feedback, you said it's 45 days or several days? What kind of, what are the ways we're getting feedback in that process?
Okay, so we have an initial meeting with the signature school principals to basically check in with them and see what their thoughts are about their current, current requirements.
Okay.
And depending on if they're interested in making any other, any changes, we work together collaboratively, the admissions office, with those school principals to talk about what those changes might look like. And then we ask the schools to engage their community and their families around those. So for example, Lincoln, Lincoln High, she, we had those initial discussions, she took what we had talked about to her SAC, got some initial feedback from the SAC, which showed us, one, people were kind of all over the place in what they were wanting, and two, that there was obviously more engagement than needed to be done. And so we also did a thought exchange that's currently going on, where, you know, we put out, what, what should we be considering when we're thinking about Lincoln admissions? And then also this evening, there, the principal at Lincoln is doing a coffee with the principal to get additional feedback from, from families and additional discussion. And so we'll check back in after that to see what kind of the temperature of the families were, what the turnout was, we'll look at our numbers from the thought exchange, and take all that into consideration to see if we need to add either an additional virtual or in-person event. So that's an example of, of how we would go through and do that.
Doesn't appear that we have any more questions.
Thank you.
All right. And then the last item under the superintendent's report is our strategic plan, end of year progress report and scorecard update. So for that presentation, we will have Jesse Lanes to come up, who's our senior planner.
Welcome, Mr. Lanes.
Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to share the strategic plan, progress report, and scorecard with the board and the community tonight. We come before the board twice a year, typically in October and in February. The purpose is really threefold, to keep you all informed as to the progress on some of these key actions, but also to be proactive with our community, to show that we're actually delivering on what we said we would. We put this plan together back in 2017 already. And then also to keep our stakeholders with us, to let them know exactly where the district's going each year, so they can support us in various ways. We have a report and a scorecard, that sometimes we print them separately, but you'll notice the scorecard is just the last few pages of the report that you have in your, in your binders. For any in the room or in the community who would like to access this report, it is available online on our webpage. So it's kcpublicschools.org backslash strategic plan, where you can find an archive of all of our past progress reports and past scorecards. So we can direct folks there if they want to find this information later. This report, since it's the end of the year report, what we do are we're reporting out on key actions from last school year. So we're kind of rewinding mainly second semester of the 2021 school year. The key actions that were selected at the beginning of the last school year are the eight that are listed there on the screen. Just as a reminder for the community, that wheel to the left is our current strategic plan, how we've organized the work of adults in our district around those four different pillars. We have 12 strategic priorities that go around, and then each strategic priority has numerous key actions. So these are some of the key actions that were selected by Dr. Bedell and Cabinet at the beginning of last year. You notice that some of the items on there are repeats, those are because those are really big key actions that community members fought really hard for when we did this plan originally. One of those is 4.4, you probably see that one a lot, academic safety nets. That's one that, that one is just loaded with lots of great things, and it made the list again because of the Kansas City Virtual Academy, really was something that was exploding in enrollment last year, so that had to be an area of focus of the district because of things going on with our COVID-19 response. As well as 10.1, that's one that comes up a lot, the results focus plans, because there's so many things that can fall in that category. And again, for last school year, the strategic enrollment management plan that Mr. Rand just talked about was, was a part of that. But this just kind of shows you the, the breadth of some of these items. Tonight, we're going to go through just a couple of highlights. You'll notice within the report, we did it in the same kind of exact fashion that we've had before. There's accomplishments, issues and challenges, lessons learned, and then priorities for the next time around. There's also another piece that we've added based upon feedback from the board previously when we talked to you, that is progress measurements. So we wanted to be more intentional about how we're measuring progress on each of these things. Some of the things are things you can measure in that year, so it's really easy to tell, you know, this is pushing what we want to push. Some of those things are going to have to wait, you know, another year or so, as we see some, some greater work in, in these different areas. But that is a new, new feature of this specific report. So this is one of our key action areas, 1.3 about student voice, it's a great one, creating those opportunities for student voice and ownership by integrating their knowledge, culture, and experiences into the classroom. So a lot of work was done last year to lay the groundwork for these courses that we're currently offering in this school year, our Black History and Heritage, and our Latinx History and Heritage courses. So at the beginning of the year, we sat down with Cabinet members and we had work plans for each of these. We said, what does successful implementation look like? What are we going to do first quarter, second, third, and fourth? So that helped us kind of draft what we were going to look at. We said if we're successful in this, we're going to see it be determined by student enrollment. So students who are interested in taking the class, student achievement, which we will get into that once that course ends, and we're going to administer a survey at the end of the semester as well, to see. So enrollment, it's good. We have 89 students enrolled in Black History, 82 students enrolled in Latinx this semester. So there was actually greater student interest than we were anticipating, so we had to offer more of those sections this year, which is wonderful to see with, with, among some of our high schools there. Another key action that we'll talk about briefly is 11.2. This is one that might not sound interesting, but I particularly think it's very, very interesting, of talking about data, creating these data collection and reporting systems that increase the effective use of data to drive leadership decisions. Notice particularly regarding matters of access, opportunity, and equity. So one of the things that was done last year was the creation of equity audits. Originally, this was done on a spreadsheet, later it was transferred into and updated into Power BI, which is really a dynamic data visualization tool to help you, help all of us understand exactly what's, what's going on with different trends. So in the, the audits here, it looked at the school's academic attendance, discipline, graduation data, and then it disaggregated by race, gender, IEP, things like that. So, and then once we put this tool into Power BI, we really were able then to, to see some trends and be able to use it. So you'll notice on the screen there, there's a screenshot of what that dashboard looks like within Power BI. That's not meant to be read, so don't try to read the, the little numbers there, but it's just kind of an example of what that looks like. So for an example, with some of those filters and some of the things you can find, like in this example, we looked at black male students at their suspension percentage, found that it was two times that of their population percentage. But then when you put on an ELL filter, so you're just looking at black male ELL students, their suspension percentage is three times that of their population percentage. So going through this school by school, and then meetings were held with each principal to share this information with them, talking about how they can use this to better inform systems that they're building, to make changes that, that create the benefit for all students. In addition to the, the work that was done with the equity audits, there was lots of dashboards that were created last year from data. I'll mention one, because it was very important for us last year, our COVID-19 dashboard, which was referenced a lot, put together by the research department, that was coming, assembling data from lots of different sources, and that was very lots of different sources, and that was very important as leadership was making decisions to make sure that our students were safe, that our staff was safe as well. Um, so, it informed a lot of our decisions that we made last year, and it's something that we're continuing to utilize. So, what about for this school year? These are the key actions that were selected before our current school year. And so, this time around, what we had is, we had challenge, we challenged Cabinet to think of things in terms of buckets, instead of specific, maybe key actions that we're pulling out. Um, so, we talked about four main things that are really important to focus on this year, and those include accelerated learning support, because of, you know, the students who may have struggled during, um, distance learning. We talked about trauma-informed care, development and support for new employees, and then recruitment and retention of students. Those are the things that really rose to the top. And so, then, these key actions, the eight that are listed there, are things within our existing strategic plan that fall into those different categories. So, those are the things we're going to specifically be, um, measuring and targeting for, for this year. Joe, any questions that I could answer?
No, thank you very much for the presentation. I, I think, uh, Mr. Abarka has one, and then I'll, I'm sure others will.
Thank you. I, I was curious about the Latinx and African-American Heritage courses that are being taught. I remember however long ago, we had the presentation about who was creating the curriculums. Have we added anyone of Latino descent into that development process yet? Because I think before, there wasn't anyone creating the curriculum.
Let me defer to Dr. Jones.
Hey, how you doing? Uh, I want to be honest, as far as the names, I got a C written down, dyslexia's kicking in. But, we have, uh, individuals from, you know, various parts of the, the, the community, as well as, um, from UMKC that are helping with this. Uh, I have to say that, you know, when the two courses were first offered, one of the things you have to understand is they're semester-long courses, so they would have to occur kind of like at the end of, of a student's matriculation through, um, social studies. So, they would occur kind of bookend somewhere around like, um, after you would take, uh, government. But now that we see the interests, we can see a way of putting it in other places. But to answer your, you know, your first question, yes, we do have more community involvement, more people to, to look at the curriculum and say, yes, this should be where we should be, and we're making those adjustments.
All right, good evening. Uh, we did, uh, recruit the assistance of a KCPS graduate. Uh, she also served as our keynote for, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month last year, so Dr. Erica Hernané Scott. She did put her eyes on it, provided quite a bit of feedback back to the curriculum department. So, we did have Latinx representation to perform some, uh, help us vet the curriculum.
A doctor alumni?
We know, and I think we tried. I think, um, I know, we, 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 we've, I don't know if this is the individual. I think we tried to, to get that individual to come and work here.
Um, Ms. Buckner?
Yes, um, my question is really around 1.3 as well, student voice and ownership. Um, so, a lot of times when we talk about, like, this very thing, student voice and ownership, real-world experiences, like these innovative things as it relates to teaching and learning, it's always around like the high school experience, right? And so, I'm interested to know, like, how these things show up on the elementary and middle school level. Um, you know, I, I, I think we're doing some really robust things on the high school level. So, what are we doing in elementary and middle schools, um, that reflect this?
And I can tell you that, that was a big part of our focus previously with some of the things we did put in elementary school. When you think about the, uh, STEM focus that we put in place, that wasn't, that wasn't a focus. So, our, um, i-Spark classes, that was part of, uh, something that we did differently at the elementary school. We also knew that we wanted to have a different focus with how we would redesign exceptional education services. We did a lot of that. We brought somebody in to give us an audit, and then we ended up redesigning how we would service our students, in particular at the elementary level. The newcomer welcome center is a part of that innovation, but that's primarily a program that focuses on elementary school, on, on elementary kids, and them being able to have all of those resources in one centralized location that we think could ultimately help us with more value-add. So, you know, there's, there's a couple of other initiatives I can't think of off the top of my head, but we did try to have some balance with what we would do at the elementary, what we would do at high school. The area where I would say that we really have not done a tremendous job of, of really innovating is probably the middle school level. I think that's an area that we want to, as we build out what we need to do. And we're seeing it even in our surveys and the feedback that we're getting around that middle school experience. But, those are just a couple of things to, to just answer your question.
All right, any other questions? Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Lanes.
All right, thank you. So, we are, all right, we're to the board of directors' report.
Okay, we're moving right through. Um, we're to the board of directors' portion of our meeting, and it looks like it is time for the chair to recognize Mr. Abarka, the treasurer, for the finance report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think we've got... Perfect. Go. Awesome, thank you. Uh, summary of our revenues and expenditures. Uh, we see here that our year-to-date expenditures are $38.1 million more than our year-to-date revenues, clearly showing our need for a strong June 30th fund balances. Um, no, yeah, so the year-to-date here is, is kind of backwards. So, uh, we'll get there. Um, looking at our local revenues, I'll let the slides catch up here. Um, while we are at 25% of our way through the fiscal year, local revenues total only 4.5 million or 2% of the annual budget. Um, again, remember, our, our revenues will come in in larger chunks, uh, in certain sections, and, uh, we'll spend through that and make strategic investments, so we can cover the months that we do not have as much, uh, front-loaded dollars coming in. So, looking at, uh, total revenues here, wait a minute, uh, total revenues 2.2 of our annual budget at this point. Um, so, just really showing you where we're at in the process. Um, the pie chart, which is our normal pie chart here, uh-oh, there we go. That's okay, we're, we're catching up. We got some, some delay. Struggle is real, it happens. So, as always, uh, property taxes, our local, um, fund is our largest. Um, you'll see federal being a lot higher than normal, and this is a lot, uh, has a lot to do with our COVID funds that we're receiving. Uh, and hopefully, that share will even grow larger, if feedback better comes through in the proper ways. Moving on to the next slide here. So, uh, expenditures, um, so, my slides are a little bit off here. Um, we, let's move to purchase services here real quick. Uh, there we go. So, we are beginning to see expenditures post, as we are now three months into the year. Uh, we see here that 6337 technology repairs is already over budget. Uh, this is due to a really high number of return devices that were damaged as we collected them over the summer. Uh, property insurance is over budget, while liability insurance is under. Uh, this is a national market trend, so these are just a few areas that we wanted to highlight to make sure you're taking note of, um, some of those changes that are over, um, budgets. Um, looking at our pie charts for expenditures, supplies and materials, capital outlays, um, things seem to be aligning as, as needed here. Um, again, similar, 63% of our budget is for salary and benefits. Almost 3% of our budget is needed to support long-term debt, shown here as other. Uh, typically, this would be paid with a debt service levy. However, since we don't have one in place, although we very much like one, um, we use our operating funds to meet the debt obligations. So, again, looking at our investment portfolios, these investments are strategically made to make sure we can maintain our cash flow, um, as we offset from the months that we are not receiving revenue. That's it.
And that is your report? Thank you very much, Mr. Abarka. Are there any questions for the treasurer? Nope, okay, great, thank you. And for Ms. Thompson?
Great job.
Yay.
Good job, because, look, Ms. Thompson was running away from that podium.
Great, thank you. So, next, we come to ad hoc committee reports. I would like to recognize Ms. Cortez, uh, the finance committee chair.
Ms. Thompson, thank you for being here, and, uh... The, uh, the, the finance committee continues its work. Um, really, the focus this quarter are on a couple of different things. Uh, one, we anticipate receiving, uh, the draft audit in November. Um, I'm waiting to see if Ms. Thompson shakes her head, yes. Um, and, uh, we, and, and anticipate bringing the, the final audit to the board, uh, for board review and approval in December. Um, the second item that we've been talking about are, uh, employee benefit renewals and, uh, some of the, uh, implications, uh, in that process, and that will come to the board, um, later in the year as well. And the third, uh, item has really been around community engagement, and it looks like, um, the, the idea that Mr. Abarka brought to the finance committee is now weaving its way into the Blueprint 2030 process. So, um, remember that the finance committee is very interested in the Blueprint 2030 process, and, and in really helping our community engage, uh, on an ongoing basis in, in understanding how our budget gets built, and how those decisions impact, um, the breadth of services that we deliver to our, our, our students and families. So, uh, that's all.
Thank you very much for that report. And, Ms. Buckner, you're good?
Yes, um, yeah, we rescheduled the meeting.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I covered. Um, so, I would like to just quickly give an update from the Government Relations Committee. As, uh, those of you that have been following, we did approve the legislative priorities at the last board meeting, and, um, Friday, December 3rd, will be our legislative breakfast. It will be in person. It will also be virtual, for those of you that, um, that works better. So, look in your email, um, boxes for that coming soon, but you can go ahead and pencil it in. It will begin, I believe, usually at 8:00 to 8:30, we do a breakfast, and then about 8:30, we start the actual agenda. So, then, we also have, we've finally nailed down the, um, Kansas City Public Schools Lobby Day, where we'll be going down to Jefferson City as a really big cohort, hopefully with parents, and some students, board members, and district administration. So, we're really looking forward to that. And just one last reminder, that if you are following along, and you want to stay engaged with what we're doing, both at the city, county, and state and federal level, as it relates to legislation and government relations, you can, um, ask to be added to our email list. It is, you send an email with your name, and obviously, the email that you want to have added, to legislativealerts@kcpublicschools.org. And, uh, we're really judicious, so you won't get a ton, only when you really need to know what's going on. So, all right. That's the end of my report. I believe now, we're at the point where we're at regular business items, and the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell.
All right, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. We are moving on to six items that we need the board to approve. The first item being the, uh, administration requests approval of the amendment to Cornerstones of Care contract for $700,000 total, not to exceed, for services for our special education students.
Thank you. Do I need to reread that since he read it? Okay, that's what I thought. So, I would entertain a motion.
Some of it.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the service agreement with Cornerstones and Care. Um, is there any debate on the motion? Nope, seeing none. June, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Wonderful. Uh, next.
Thank you. The next item is, um, administration requests approval of a contract with Northwest Rogers Construction for $1,013,280 for installation of food storage coolers at Franklin.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some of it.
Oops. It's moved and seconded to approve coolers at Franklin Operations Center. Is there any debate on the motion? Oh, great.
I just want, I just want to make one comment, and that is to commend the administration again on, uh, bringing us a contract that has, uh, a very significant participation of M and WBE contractors.
Um, Ms. Cortez, you're correct. That is, uh, 41.6% of WBE, so we are happy that we were able to accomplish that with this, uh, project.
Wonderful. Uh, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Great, motion passes. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you. Item number three, the administration requests approval to renew our contract with all city management, uh, in an amount not to exceed $250,000, and that's for crossing guard services.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some of it.
Second.
It has moved and seconded to approve the renewal contract for school traffic control services with all city management. Any debate on this motion? Seeing none. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Great. Dr. Bedell, could, uh, motion passes, just so that those, um, online can hear. Go ahead, Dr. Bedell.
Thank you. Item number four, the administration requests approval of the direct service provider agreement with Mid-America Regional Council, Mark, for early, uh, head start services for $339,909. The fiscal period for this grant is September through August.
Great, thank you. Um, do we have a motion?
Some of it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the direct service provider agreement between Mid-America Regional Council and Kansas City Public Schools for early head start services. Any debate on this motion? Seeing none. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
The motion passes. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fifth item, the administration requests approval of the direct service provider agreement with Mid-America Regional Council for head start services for $5,045,885. The fiscal period for this grant is November through October.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some of it.
Great, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the direct service provider agreement between Mid-America, America Regional Council and Kansas City Public Schools for head start services. Are there, is there any debate on the motion? Seeing, oh.
Actually, it's not debate, it's a request, and that would be, uh, if we could receive an update in the, on, in the Friday update in the next couple of weeks about the status of enrollment, um, in these, in this pre-K program. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Um, so, seeing no further debate, June, will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
The motion passes. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you. And our final item that we're asking the board to take action on is our, um, KCPS funding agreements with the individual charter schools. This is the MOU that we've entered into with charter schools over the last three years to address the funding differences. This year, it's in the amount of $9,503,787.
And I understand we need to actually read the who it covers as well? So, I'll, I'll just finish it up.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the, this will be covering the Academe Lafayette, Academy for the Integrated Arts, Allen Village School, BSDS Inc., DBA Brookside Charter School, Citizens of the World Charter Schools, Kansas City, Frontier Schools Inc., Genesis School Inc., Gordon Parks Elementary School, Hogan Preparatory Academy, Hope Leadership Academy, Ewing Marion Kaufman School Inc., KC International Academy, KIP Endeavor Academy, Escuela Vida Nueva, Lee A. Tolbert Community Academy, and University Academy. Do we have a motion?
Some of it.
A second? It is moved and seconded to approve the listed individual charter schools funding agreements in fulfillment of Kansas City Public Schools' commitment to all students in the KCPS' boundaries by voluntarily bridging the fiscal year 2022 funding gap to charters based on the formula in Section 106.415.4 RSMO. Is there any debate or discussion on this motion?
I have one question. Gosh, I feel terrible doing this. I know that there are a few missing from this list. Do we anticipate those will be coming to us at a future board meeting?
Yes, yes, because I think oft, sometimes what happens is, Shonis can probably speak to this, some of them don't get their MOUs in on, in a timely manner, so I know we've done this in the past where we will come back and come to the board with those, those few scragglers.
Can I also ask, because I think that this was something, I would, we have two new board members that I believe this is the first time that they are voting on this agreement, and I think, would it be okay to just explain very briefly what this covers? Thank you, Dr. Tom.
Absolutely. Good evening, Board Chairman, Madam Chairman, Dr. Bedell, board members. Just to share a little bit with you, this was a decision Kansas City Public Schools, and the board had come to the conclusion on their own, this is a voluntary funding agreement with the charter schools. Due to the funding mechanism that takes place and how the statute is written for charter schools, when there is a, there was a threshold of funding that was given to them from the State Department. So, the way the statute is written, the charter schools are not a taxing jurisdiction, so they do not get local funds directly as Kansas City Public Schools does. So, the funding mechanism for them was through a formula, statutory formula, where DESI pays through the local funds directly from the State Department, and that would have been the dollars that the State Department would have naturally paid Kansas City Public Schools in order to accommodate for those local funds. Once their enrollment hit a threshold, those dollars were no longer available at the State Department level. So, Kansas City Public Schools and the board decided, like I said, this is in our third year, so the decision was made to voluntarily come to the table to pass those funds through to the charter schools, and this is done through the funding agreement. So, each year, we do have a funding agreement. And as Dr. Bedell has said, before you are 17 schools, there are three who actually had later board meetings, because they also take this agreement to their boards, and so they were unable to have the agreement back to us by the time for this board meeting, for you to be able to get those agreements to you. So, they will be coming to you in the November board meeting. So, the last three will be there. And please forgive me, because I'm going off, I'm going off the top of my head. I believe it's the Kansas City Girls Preparatory Academy, and please forgive me. So, please, please forgive me, but I can definitely get those to you. It's just that I'm not looking at the list, and so I can normally tell you, but, but there are three charter schools.
Ms. Buckner, did you have another question?
Yes, this is going to sound almost like a tangent, but I promise you it's not. I'm thinking about, you just gave us like some really good information, right? And you framed it in a way that it was directed for us as board members. But the reality is like, we can get the information, we have the privilege of having these conversations outside of this, but I'm thinking about the folks who are watching, the folks who came here, and we just approved $9 million for charter schools, and we understand like there is some urgency around the funding structure here, right? And so, I just keep wondering about our marketing strategy, how we pull folks in, the purpose of these board meetings to engage the public, how can we ensure that this information is accessible, it's easy to understand? Like, that is, we can't say we're going to be, we want folks to come down to Jeff City, and they don't even know what's going on for real. So, I just want to make sure like, this isn't for you directly, but I'm just thinking about the way we do things in this district, like, you know, we just got to do better with this.
So, I think, I actually like the fact that you have both had to, you know, come into this new, because we have, and I'm probably, I guess, the senior person, which just always makes me shake my head. Yeah, there's a lot that I think we need to, because we've been here doing it for so long, we need to kind of step back and remember, we've got to constantly, as you've said, always be explaining and telling the backstory context so people understand, why did the board just approve voluntarily a $9 million allocation to cover charter funding? Because it's a really good story to tell what's going on there, because, I don't know if you would agree with this, but the, how we came even to the Ed collab is part of that, which you probably don't even know that whole backstory. So, yes, I think there's an opportunity to share with the public what Kansas City Public Schools is actually doing as a leader in the role of trying to create a landscape system in Kansas City Public Schools, and this is just the one piece of that, which is, we felt two boards ago, I think it was, compelled to uphold the funding agreement, because we do see the mobility between our systems back and forth, and we felt it was important to honor that funding difference. But as you, I think, also quickly figured out, the best way to get out from underneath this sort of a situation is to increase enrollment. That's exactly how this flipped situation got. So, I just appreciate you both kind of being that fresh set of eyes to this and reminding us that what we take is like, oh, this is just what we do. We need to go back and explain to the public constantly. So, thank you for that. Are there any more pieces of discussion or debate on the motion? Okay, seeing none. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Great, the motion passes. Is that our last? That was our last one. Wonderful. We are now to consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the items on the consent agenda. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Great, the consent agenda is approved. So, we are to the review new task and action items, and I know June has been frantically writing these down. Would you please review the action items from this evening?
The first one I have is regarding the question on the subcontractor for Holdsworth. He would like to know the engagement for the general contractor, and how are the contractors secured and engaged? Wants to know the engagement with the minority chambers. I'm sorry, I don't have it very well, but how is it brought about? Is that about right? Can I catch that? Okay, Ms. Cortez asked, what percentage of students applied to the signature schools didn't get in? How oversubscribed are we? We need to spend time on a strategy on making neighborhood schools the school of choice. Did I capture that?
Yeah, the last part is included.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Wolfsee would like the chart for enrollment updated, and the chart that shows the 192021 enrollment, and where did the neighboring districts and St. Louis stand in that? Ms. Wolfsee also asked, what are the neighboring schools doing with pre-K, and how could we replicate it?
Yes, specifically looking at neighborhood schools that have big increases in kindergarten and first grade, and is there something there to be learned? And then, my last question was whether or not we tried to do qualitative research around why people enroll so late, so that maybe there's some things we could learn there.
And you were going to say that to me. Okay, Ms. Cortez asked, so I put page 34. These are the trends that are concerning, and wants to know how these fit in marketing and demographics. This was related to enrollment, I believe, and how do they relate to charters, and to look at the data. I will kind of clarify that a lot better by looking at the page. Sometimes I write in shorthand. Ms. Cortez, I put on here you had additional questions that you were going to send me by email, is that correct? Thank you. The last one I have is the status of head start pre-K enrolled. Okay, thank you. I have things written down everywhere.
Thank you. I'm looking at my colleagues, did that capture everything you thought was should, okay, great. Well, this brings us to the conclusion of our agenda. Oops, sorry, yes, Dr. Bedell, would you like to say some things?
I just wanted to, I know most of our board and community members here know Dr. Kristy Harrison, she's been a longtime educator in this school system, was the former principal of Trailwoods Elementary, and did a really good job there. She's been working in central office now for the last three or four years? Oh, five? They've gone that fast, okay. And so, earlier tonight, we shared with the board that she has been moved into an interim position to help support our school leadership division as an assistant superintendent, and will be working with Dr. Jackson and Ms. Williams, Thomas, wow, I just murdered your last name. I think that's the third last name I've given you in 24 hours. But in any event, we're excited to have you on board and to be able to help us continue to move this district. We got a lot of big things that are happening, navigating through COVID, the Blueprint 2030 work, and most importantly, the interruption that we had in education. So, having you all to be able to give that undivided attention to fewer schools, we think will help us with the goals that we're trying to accomplish with our academic goals along with our social and emotional goals. So, welcome to this position, and I look forward to working alongside you.
All right, now, this brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this evening, so if there is no objection, the meeting is adjourned. Oh, and the next board meeting is November 17.